Welcome to the public hearing of the municipality of the county of Kings. The date is Tuesday, October 1st, 2024. The hour is 6:00 PM. We are here in council chambers. I am Deputy Mayor Emily Lutz, filling in for Mayor Matart tonight, who is off on medical — who is walking through the door as we speak. So I am filling in for Mayor Matart tonight, however, he has joined us and will be taking his seat in my usual chair, which he's more than welcome to sit in this evening. Welcome, Mayor Matart. So at a public hearing is a bit different than a municipal council meeting. Council is here tonight in more of an adjudicative fashion, in that we hear from planning staff. The purpose is to hear from the public when staff have made a presentation. And then at that point, the public hearing will be closed, and we will move into municipal council. So currently, we're in a public hearing. At this point, I've called the meeting to order, and we will go to our only item of business this evening, which is the planning document, two-year review and housekeeping amendments. We have Ms. Laura Mosher with us, the manager of planning and development for the county, who will be guiding us through a presentation, after which we'll open the floor to questions from council, and then open the floor to public comment. Ms. Mosher, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. As the deputy mayor indicated, we are here for a public hearing. Technically, we only need the public hearing for our housekeeping amendments, but we've done them all together, so we might as well do the public hearing altogether. So first, we'll do our planning documents' two-year review. So MPS Policy 5.4.1 requires that council do a review of the municipal planning strategy every two years, mostly to identify any areas that may need some attention. We can hear from the public on matters. But this review is going to provide an overview of our planning applications over the last four years. It was pointed out at PAC that I kept calling it a two-year review, but if you recall, our planning documents were adopted in 2020, and we're now in 2024, so simple math even I can do, says that's four years, not two. And the reason for that was because we did have COVID during that time, and we did have a few staffing challenges over the course of this time period. And so the review was not completed until this year, but the good news is, we have done a review of, well, it's technically three years, because we're not finished 2024 yet. So our data comes from 2021, 2022, and 2023. So we will review the planning applications. We'll review some permit information. We'll review our appeals, and we can also talk about some anecdotal monitoring of inquiries. All this to say is, staff have come to the conclusion that our planning documents are doing what they're supposed to. If you recall correctly, the major motivators of our planning documents are to reduce non-farm development in our A1 zone, and to direct the majority of our growth to our growth centers. So we'll take a look at that. So in terms of our application types, we have had what the staff report calls 99 actions in that three-year period. That doesn't mean there were 99 applications, because some applications involve two actions. So if we received an application to discharge an existing development agreement and enter into a new development agreement, that counts as two things, two things that we did. So we had 99, of which nearly 40% were development agreements, new development agreements. We had a few discharges of development agreements, some LUB map amendments, 33%, and we did have 9% LUB text amendments. This is generally, the text amendments to the land use bylaw are generally to be expected following the adoption of new planning documents. That's part of the, you know, growing pains, that we may identify things in short order that aren't quite working, and applicants may desire to put that forward to council to see if there could be a change. I was asked at PAC to provide data for the previous period, so I did look at the three years prior to adoption, so 2017 to 2019. And we see that our number, the number of our development agreements has been reduced slightly by 4%. That difference has in part been made up through map amendments. And then the rest are sort of, they're relatively consistent. You will see, no, that's about, that's about it. So fairly consistent with our previous set of documents. There had been some discussion at Planning Advisory Committee when we were drafting, that there may be a desire to reduce the number of development agreements, and we are seeing that slight reduction. So things are happening more by LUB map amendment, which has increased flexibility in certain cases. So application by use, what are the uses we're enabling through our applications? And primarily, what we're seeing is residential and tourism, but with some smaller aspects of commercial and other. So other would, would be applications that would be considered other would be development agreement discharges, and applications to expand a non-conforming use. We're not really enabling a new use, we're just enabling the expansion of an existing use, so we've classified those as others. We do also see an emergence of agricultural applications, and these have been primarily new farmer development agreements. So applications from new farmers who aren't eligible to build a dwelling in the A1 zone, but have provided and met all the criteria for a new farmer development agreement, to enable them to build the dwelling in advance of them meeting the income requirements. So again, we see this comparison, residential has increased slightly to 35% from 33% of our applications. The thing I found surprising was tourism. Tourism actually dropped. It feels like we've been doing a lot more tourism applications, but that's not what the numbers bear. We do see a reduction in our commercial applications, which to me says that our commercial operators are finding it a lot easier to navigate in our documents slightly, 2% difference. So but generally speaking, we have seen fewer commercial applications. The other side is 4% higher in this more recent period than the previous one. That's easily explained through development agreement discharges. When we have an existing development agreement and the owner wishes to make a change, oftentimes that policy doesn't exist anymore, so we often have to discharge the development agreement and enter into a new one under the new policies if it's still enabled. In terms of our permit data, remember I said we were looking to drive growth to our growth centers, primarily that's residential growth, and we have seen that happen. We have seen a significant increase in permit numbers in our growth centers. We do expect that trend to continue with more development agreements for larger-scale developments, as well as more flexible, a more flexible policy and regulatory framework for residential uses especially. The other aspect was to reduce the number of dwellings constructed in the A1 zone, and you will see that those have significantly reduced, especially our non-farm dwellings. So we had 53 between 2017 and 2019, and nine between 2021 and 2023. So in that regard, our documents are working incredibly well. We have seen an uptick in appeals over our period. We have had nine appeals. So
Good evening. Welcome to the public hearing of the municipality of the county of Kings. The date is Tuesday, October 1st, 2024. The hour is 6:00 PM. We are here in council chambers. I am Deputy Mayor Emily Lutz, filling in for Mayor Matart tonight, who is off on medical — who is walking through the door as we speak. So I am filling in for Mayor Matart tonight, however, he has joined us and will be taking his seat in my usual chair, which he's more than welcome to sit in this evening. Welcome, Mayor Matart. So at a public hearing is a bit different than a municipal council meeting. Council is here tonight in more of an adjudicative fashion, in that we hear from planning staff. The purpose is to hear from the public once staff have made a presentation, and then at that point, the public hearing will be closed, and we will move into municipal council. So currently, we're in a public hearing. At this point, I've called the meeting to order, and we will go to our only item of business this evening, which is the planning document, two-year review and housekeeping amendments. We have Ms. Laura Mosher with us, the manager of planning and development for the county, who will be guiding us through a presentation, after which we'll open the floor to questions from council, and then open the floor to public comment. Ms. Mosher, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. As the deputy mayor indicated, we are here for a public hearing. Technically, we only need the public hearing for our housekeeping amendments, but we've done them all together, so we might as well do the public hearing altogether. So first, we'll do our planning documents' two-year review. So MPS Policy 5.4.1 requires that council do a review of the municipal planning strategy every two years, mostly to identify any areas that may need some attention. We can hear from the public on matters. But this review is going to provide an overview of our planning applications over the last four years. It was pointed out at PAC that I kept calling it a two-year review, but if you recall, our planning documents were adopted in 2020, and we're now in 2024, so simple math even I can do, says that's four years, not two. And the reason for that was because we did have COVID during that time, and we did have a few staffing challenges over the course of this time period. And so the review was not completed until this year, but the good news is, we have done a review of, well, it's technically three years, because we're not finished 2024 yet. So our data comes from 2021, 2022, and 2023. So we will review the planning applications. We'll review some permit information. We'll review our appeals, and we can also talk about some anecdotal monitoring of inquiries. All this to say is, staff have come to the conclusion that our planning documents are doing what they're supposed to. If you recall correctly, the major motivators of our planning documents are to reduce non-farm development in our A1 zone, and to direct the majority of our growth to our growth centers. So we'll take a look at that. So in terms of our application types, we have had what the staff report calls 99 actions in that three-year period. That doesn't mean there were 99 applications, because some applications involve two actions. So if we received an application to discharge an existing development agreement and enter into a new development agreement, that counts as two things, two things that we did. So we had 99, of which nearly 40% were development agreements, new development agreements. We had a few discharges of development agreements, some LUB map amendments, 33%, and we did have 9% LUB text amendments. This is generally, the text amendments to the land use bylaw are generally to be expected following the adoption of new planning documents. That's part of the, you know, growing pains, that we may identify things in short order that aren't quite working, and applicants may desire to put that forward to council to see if there could be a change. I was asked at PAC to provide data for the previous period, so I did look at the three years prior to adoption, so 2017 to 2019. And we see that our number, the number of our development agreements has been reduced slightly by 4%. That difference has in part been made up through map amendments. And then the rest are sort of, they're relatively consistent. You will see, no, that's about, that's about it. So fairly consistent with our previous set of documents. There had been some discussion at Planning Advisory Committee when we were drafting, that there may be a desire to reduce the number of development agreements, and we are seeing that slight reduction. So things are happening more by LUB map amendment, which has increased flexibility in certain cases. So application by use, what are the uses we're enabling through our applications? And primarily, what we're seeing is residential and tourism, but with some smaller aspects of commercial and other. So other would, would be applications that would be considered other would be development agreement discharges, and applications to expand a non-conforming use. We're not really enabling a new use, we're just enabling the expansion of an existing use, so we've classified those as others. We do also see an emergence of agricultural applications, and these have been primarily new farmer development agreements. So applications from new farmers who aren't eligible to build a dwelling in the A1 zone, but have provided and met all the criteria for a new farmer development agreement, to enable them to build the dwelling in advance of them meeting the income requirements. So again, we see this comparison, residential has increased slightly to 35% from 33% of our applications. The thing I found surprising was tourism. Tourism actually dropped. It feels like we've been doing a lot more tourism applications, but that's not what the numbers bear. We do see a reduction in our commercial applications, which to me says that our commercial operators are finding it a lot easier to navigate in our documents slightly, 2% difference. So but generally speaking, we have seen fewer commercial applications. The other side is 4% higher in this more recent period than the previous one. That's easily explained through development agreement discharges. When we have an existing development agreement and the owner wishes to make a change, oftentimes that policy doesn't exist anymore, so we often have to discharge the development agreement and enter into a new one under the new policies if it's still enabled. In terms of our permit data, remember I said we were looking to drive growth to our growth centers, primarily that's residential growth, and we have seen that happen. We have seen a significant increase in permit numbers in our growth centers. We do expect that trend to continue with more development agreements for larger-scale developments, as well as more flexible, a more flexible policy and regulatory framework for residential uses especially. The other aspect was to reduce the number of dwellings constructed in the A1 zone, and you will see that those have significantly reduced, especially our non-farm dwellings. So we had 53 between 2017 and 2019, and nine between 2021 and 2023. So in that regard, our documents are working incredibly well. We have seen an uptick in appeals over our period. We have had nine appeals.
Good evening. Welcome to the public hearing of the municipality of the County of Kings. The date is Tuesday, October 1st, 2024. The hour is 6:00 PM. We are here in council chambers. I am Deputy Mayor Emily Lutz, filling in for Mayor Matart tonight, who is off on medical... Who is walking through the door as we speak. So, I am filling in for Mayor Matart tonight. However, he has joined us and will be taking his seat in my usual chair, which he's more than welcome to sit in this evening. Welcome, Mayor Matart. So, at a public hearing, it is a bit different than a municipal council meeting. Council is here tonight in more of an adjudicative fashion in that we hear from planning staff. The purpose is to hear from the public when staff have made a presentation. And then, at that point, the public hearing will be closed and we will move into municipal council. So, currently, we're in a public hearing. At this point, I've called the meeting to order and we will go to our only item of business this evening, which is the planning document, two-year review and housekeeping amendments. We have Ms. Laura Mosher with us, the manager of planning and development for the county, who will be guiding us through a presentation, after which, we'll open the floor to questions from council and then, open the floor to public comment. Ms. Mosher, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. As the Deputy Mayor indicated, we are here for a public hearing. Technically, we only need the public hearing for our housekeeping amendments, but we've done them all together, so we might as well do the public hearing altogether. So first, we'll do our planning documents' two-year review. So, MPS Policy 5.4.1 requires that council do a review of the municipal planning strategy every two years, mostly to identify any areas that may need some attention. We can hear from the public on matters. But, this review is going to provide an overview of our planning applications over the last four years. It was pointed out at PAC that I kept calling it a two-year review, but if you recall, our planning documents were adopted in 2020 and we're now in 2024, so, simple math, even I can do, says that's four years, not two. And the reason for that was because we did have COVID during that time and we did have a few staffing challenges over the course of this time period. And so, the review was not completed until this year, but the good news is, we have done a review of, well, it's technically three years because we're not finished 2024 yet. So, our data comes from 2021, 2022, and 2023. So, we will review the planning applications. We'll review some permit information. We'll review our appeals. And, we can also talk about some anecdotal monitoring of inquiries. All this to say is, staff have come to the conclusion that our planning documents are doing what they're supposed to. If you recall correctly, the major motivators of our planning documents are to reduce non-farm development in our A1 zone and to direct the majority of our growth to our growth centers. So, we'll take a look at that. So, in terms of our application types, we have had what the staff report calls 99 actions in that three-year period. That doesn't mean there were 99 applications because some applications involve two actions. So, if we received an application to discharge an existing development agreement and enter into a new development agreement, that counts as two things, two things that we did. So, we had 99, of which nearly 40% were development agreements, new development agreements. We had a few discharges of development agreements, some LUB map amendments, 33%, and we did have 9% LUB text amendments. This is generally, the text amendments to the land use bylaw are generally to be expected following the adoption of new planning documents. That's part of the, you know, growing pains, that we may identify things in short order that aren't quite working and applicants may desire to put that forward to council to see if there could be a change. I was asked at PAC to provide data for the previous period, so I did look at the three years prior to adoption, so 2017 to 2019. And we see that our number, the number of our development agreements has been reduced slightly by 4%. That difference has in part been made up through map amendments. And then, the rest are sort of, they're relatively consistent. You will see... Nope, that's about, that's about it. So, fairly consistent with our previous set of documents. There had been some discussion at Planning Advisory Committee when we were drafting that there may be a desire to reduce the number of development agreements and we are seeing that slight reduction. So, things are happening more by LUB map amendment, which has increased flexibility in certain cases. So, application by use, what are the uses we're enabling through our applications? And primarily, what we're seeing is residential and tourism, but with some smaller aspects of commercial and other. So, other would, would be applications that would be considered. Other would be development agreement discharges and applications to expand a non-conforming use. We're not really enabling a new use. We're just enabling the expansion of an existing use. So, we've classified those as others. We do also see an emergence of agricultural applications and these have been primarily new farmer development agreements. So, applications from new farmers who aren't eligible to build a dwelling in the A1 zone, but have provided and met all the criteria for a new farmer development agreement to enable them to build the dwelling in advance of them meeting the income requirements. So, again, we see this comparison. Residential has increased slightly to 35% from 33% of our applications. The thing I found surprising was tourism. Tourism actually dropped. It feels like we've been doing a lot more tourism applications, but that's not what the numbers bear. We do see a reduction in our commercial applications, which to me says that our commercial operators are finding it a lot easier to navigate in our documents slightly. It's 2% difference, so... But generally speaking, we have seen fewer commercial applications. The other side is 4% higher in this more recent period than the previous one. That's easily explained through development agreement discharges. When we have an existing development agreement and the owner wishes to make a change, oftentimes, that policy doesn't exist anymore, so we often have to discharge the development agreement and enter into a new one under the new policies if it's still enabled. In terms of our permit data, remember I said we were looking to drive growth to our growth centers? Primarily, that's residential growth and we have seen that happen. We have seen a significant increase in permit numbers in our growth centers. We do expect that trend to continue with more development agreements for larger-scale developments, as well as more flexible, a more flexible policy and regulatory framework for residential uses especially. The other aspect was to reduce the number of dwellings constructed in the A1 zone and you will see that those have significantly reduced, especially our non-farm dwellings. So, we had 53 between 2017 and 2019 and nine between 2021 and 2023. So, in that regard, our documents are working incredibly well. We have seen an uptick in appeals over our period. We have had nine appeals. However, all but one have been dismissed and the one that remains is pending. We don't have an answer on it yet. So, that means that when, when our policies have been challenged, they have stood up to the test of the appeal. So, I would like to announce that we did receive a decision last week on another appeal or, I think, but since, since PAC, we've received two additional decisions, both in Port Williams and both were dismissed. So, our planning policies are standing up to challenges and that is always a good thing. So, that concludes the two/four-year review of our planning documents. The last item on our presentation has to do with housekeeping amendments. This is very common. These are large documents, a lot of moving parts, and it often takes using them day in and day out to identify inconsistencies, typographical errors, and to find out where things aren't necessarily clear. So, the housekeeping amendments were included in the PAC agenda package and have been available on the website. And these are amendments to both the municipal planning strategy and the land use bylaw that don't change the intent or application of any aspect of the planning documents. And they also include typographical changes. So, if there was a reference that referenced the wrong policy, we've changed that. If something was misspelt, we've changed that. And then, just clarifying to make policies more consistent or more clear. And with that, I'll pass it back to the Chair for comments from the public.
Thank you so much, Ms. Mosher. I see Yanni has her light on. Yanni, did you intend that? I didn't see any glances my way after it came on, so I thought it might have been an accident.
That was...
Oh, okay, perfect. All right, is there any questions of council, from council this evening? Before we open it up? No questions? Any comments from the public at this public hearing? Okay. I see none at this point. Definitely seeing none, okay? We will adjourn the public hearing and move into our council session. So, thank you, Laura, for your presentation this evening. All right, it is 6:11 PM. Welcome to the municipal council meeting of Tuesday, October 1st, 2024 in the municipality of the County of Kings. We've just concluded a public hearing this evening. I'm Emily Lutz, the Deputy Mayor of the municipality of Kings, filling in for our Mayor Matart, who is filling my seat over to my left. So, we'll begin this council session first by acknowledging that it is treaty day. And if you would like more information on this important acknowledgement around the treaties of peace and friendship in Nova Scotia, I encourage you to look those up on our website. And then, there's a few important days of significance and this month is of significance for a number of reasons, which I will run through at the end, but I thought while today was October 1st, we'd mention that one right off the bat. We'll begin this evening by taking roll call, so I'd ask all councillors present to indicate their presence on the pin pads in front of them. For those new to council this evening, whether in person or online, we have a 10-second delay between which, when we are asked to press our button, between then and when the board lights up with our ultimate results. And as you can see, we are all present here with you this evening. Item two is the approval of the agenda and I would look for a motion to approve the agenda at this time. Moved by Councillor Davison, seconded by Councillor Harding. Councillor Killam, I believe you have something to bring forward at this time.
You want me to bring it forward now? Or, you mentioned other business, but maybe that's...
So, in order to be able to con... So, Councillor Killam has, has asked that we add something to the agenda this evening. So, at this time, I'd ask that you make a motion to amend the agenda, to add your motion...
Yes.
Under other business.
Yes, I have been asked by the community of Burlington to present a motion. If I could have a copy of that, would... Did you want me to read it?
Not at this time.
No.
But, the bulk of it is that we ask council to write a letter to Premier Tim Houston and Minister Tim Hallman regarding a moratorium on aerial herbicide spraying until a formal report on the benefits or losses of such activity can be obtained. And that we would ask our solicitor to provide a legal opinion as to whether the municipality has any jurisdiction around the banning of the aerial spraying of glyphosate. And that we send a resolution to NSAFM.
I would ask if that could be put on the agenda.
And I believe it was circulated to council ahead of time. Council has all seen this request? Okay, perfect. So, in order to amend the agenda and add something, we do need a majority of two-thirds vote. So, at this point, I would ask, thank you, Yanni, for putting our amended amendment on the floor. So, this is to amend our motion to approve the agenda in terms of adding this item. So, it's been moved by Councillor Killam. Do I have a seconder on this motion? Seconded by Councillor Granger. On the amendment, it requires a two-third majority. Is there any discussion on the amendment or the motion to amend? Mayor Matart.
I have no objection to this coming forward again. I did want to point out, however, that it's, this is a matter that council has already responded to. We have written the letter that's been requested just, it's about two years ago now. And we received a very lucid presentation from the public that convinced us to do so after we had done our own research. The difficulty, of course, is that we have received a response from the province and the feds that they don't consider that, that they're amenable to taking any action on the letter. And the reason I don't object to it coming forward again is that it's worthy of them being prompted again. I just don't want the public to be of the impression that we had not responded the first time.
Excellent context. Much appreciated for bringing that forward, Mayor Matart. All of it very noteworthy and true that we have done this, but Councillor Killam has asked we do it again. Councillor Killam on the amendment.
Yes, I bring this forward from the request from the community, but I've talked with several individuals from the community and residences that are located in the areas of the spraying. And it, it's, what I'm reading and hearing are the, the, things like, if they hear a plane, if they hear a helicopter, it's throwing their whole daily schedules out. They fear that the spraying is going to start that day. The community seems to be just at, on edge all the time now and that's, that's a big item for, for me to, to try to explain the condition the community's in, in that respect.
And we'll have ample opportunity, I think, to talk, to talk about that under other business, should your motion pass.
I'll silence myself.
Oh, you're okay. Thank you, Councillor Killam. So, on the amendment, do we have any further debate or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of adding the item related to aerial spraying to the agenda, please indicate in the usual fashion. Motion carries with one against, thank you, council. So, the motion to approve the agenda has been amended to add that item under other business. The last thing I'll note before we vote on the approval of the agenda is that item seven, dangerous and unsightly demolition, can be removed as the property owners have voluntarily demolished that structure over the weekend. So, we will no longer be discussing item seven and consider that pleased removed as part of this process. All right, we have a mover and a seconder and an amendment that has been passed. Anything further before we look for a vote? Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. All right, we have an approved agenda and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. At this point, we have an approved agenda and I would ask any councillor present to disclose if they may have a conflict of interest with any of the items that have been listed on our approved agenda. So, if you have a conflict of interest, I encourage you to disclose it now. Seeing none, we'll move to item four, approval of minutes. We have one set of minutes before us this evening from September 17th, 2024, special counsel. Would I have a motion to approve those minutes? Moved by Councillor Armstrong, seconded by Councillor Killam. Any discussion on the minutes? Errors or omissions? Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. The motion carries unanimously, thank you, council. Now that the minutes have been approved, is there any business arising that any councillor wishes to discuss from these minutes? Seeing no business arising, we shall move to item six, Planning Advisory Committee Recommendations from September 10th, 2024. I will be turning the floor to Councillor Armstrong to be reading the motions before us this evening. Councillor Armstrong.
Thank you. The first one is that municipal council gives second reading to the proposed housekeeping amendments to the text of the land use bylaw and municipal planning strategy, which is substantively the same, same for minor differences in form as the draft amendments set out in Appendix A and B of the report dated July 9, 2024. I so move.
Thank you, we have a mover. Could I have a second for the motion? Seconded by Councillor Allen, thank you. Discussion on this motion. It's not the first time council's seen it. For context, we do have, we had a presentation on this at committee of the whole. It has been to Planning Advisory Committee. Oftentimes, council is just the final step of approval in something that has been discussed multiple times and presented to us sometimes in multiple iterations. So, don't think we aren't thoughtfully considering or haven't thoughtfully debated already on, on a topic. It's just that we've probably said all we need to say, sometimes. But sometimes, we haven't, so stay tuned. Okay, we have a mover, we have a seconder. Discussion, seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. Motion carries unanimously, thank you, council. Next up, we have a land use bylaw text amendment, file number 24-05. Councillor Armstrong, over to you.
That municipal council give first reading to and hold a public hearing for the amendment to the text of the land use bylaw to permit existing uses within the comprehensive neighborhood development R5 zone as described in Appendix B of the report dated September 10, 2024. I so move.
Is there a second for the motion? Councillor Granger, thank you. Any discussion or presentation this evening on this item? Nope, okay. Councillor Killam.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. I've brought this up before, that this is, applies only to growth centers mainly, isn't it? This particular amendment?
I do believe R5 is wholly contained within growth centers, but I stand to be corrected. I think Laura will definitely know.
Through you, Madam Chair, to Councillor Killam. Yeah, CR5 zone is only enabled in growth centers.
It's only enabled within growth centers. To, to echo what Laura said in a larger voice.
I guess my, my issue on this is that, I've brought it up before, that there are many communities. We have 50 communities in Kings County and I, I was hoping that it may, this may extend to communities that, people in the communities that would like to have an extra suite or adjustment to their, to their property to allow another occupants.
I know where you're coming from, councillor. Don't believe that this is a text amendment which addresses that. Laura, for our benefit, could you just give us the coals notes on this motion?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair, to Councillor Killam. This motion is simply to permit existing uses to continue operating, expand within the R5 zone. So, currently, the only development that is permitted as of right in the R5 zone are agricultural uses and forestry uses. Any other type of development needs to occur by development agreement and there's 10 or 12 different criteria that need to be met, but this does not, this does not apply to accessory dwellings. Those are already enabled within our documents and this zone, as mentioned before, is only enabled within growth centers.
Misunderstood that, thank you.
Totally fine, councillor. All good. Thank you for the clarification, Ms. Mosher. Much appreciated. And there are other reports, so you can find additional information related to this item on the September 10th report, which is from the Planning Advisory Committee, I believe. So, for the, for your information on that one. Okay, so we have a mover and a seconder on this one. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. Motion carried unanimously, thank you, council. Councillor Armstrong, next public hearing date?
Next public hearing date before the brand-new council will be Tuesday, November 5th at 7:00 PM in these chambers.
And it's at 7:00 PM? It's normally at 6:00, but it's at 7:00 due to the municipal affairs orientation and, and for new and returning elected officials, which is held in Halifax on the 4th and 5th. So, we will be bumping it to 6:00 in order to allow all those councillors to return in time. All right, that concludes item six for this evening. Item seven was removed from the agenda, so we will proceed to item eight, Planning and Inspection Services, council appointment of development officer. Laura is back with us once again. Welcome back.
I shouldn't have sat down.
Go ahead.
So, I don't have a presentation for this. This is very quick. Section, would help if I read my staff report.
Section 243 subsection 1.
Section 243 subsection 1 of the Municipal Government Act requires that council appoint a development officer to act on their behalf in issuing permits, processing subdivisions and variances and site plans and the like. Kimberly Crew has been with the municipality for six or seven weeks now. She brings a wealth of experience from Cape Breton, where she worked as a development officer for five years. And we, at a staff level, are comfortable at this point in having you appoint her an official development officer for the municipality of the County of Kings in accordance with the Municipal Government Act.
Perfect, thank you, ca... Thank you, Ms. Mosher. So, we have the motion, which reads that municipal council appoint Kimberly Crew as a development officer for the municipality of the County of Kings as required under section 243 subsection 1 of the Nova Scotia Municipal Government Act while employed with the municipality. Do I have a mover of this motion? Moved by Mayor Matart, seconded by Councillor Burgess. Any discussion? I see none. I'll call the question. All in favor or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. I believe Mr. Terry Brown will be coming and giving our next presentation, item 8B, council appointment of building officials. I suspect it's a similar process, but we'll let Mr. Brown take us through it.
Can everyone hear me? Okay, thank you.
Just getting some screens switched around. Here we go. Okay, here we go.
Okay, excuse me. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Lutz, members of council. This evening, I'm here to provide a brief presentation regarding the appointment of building officials and a request for a decision. The province of Nova Scotia has adopted the Nova Scotia Building Code Act, which references the National Building Code of Canada. By adopting the act, the province requires each municipal council to be responsible for the appointment of building officials as set out in section 5 of the act. A bit of the background. In the last number of years, we've seen an increase in permit applications, permits issued, the conduction of, conducted inspections. The number has increased, as well as investigations of complaints. An investigation of complaints, for example, could be anything from an illegal two-unit to illegal construction, illegal deck, that sort of thing that staff needs to investigate. With, with the increase of such things as, as the increase of inspections, the issuance of permits, staff identified that we should have a succession plan put in place for building officials. Like every municipality across the province, there's been a struggle with recruitment and retaining building officials. There's been a lack of qualified inspectors. So, with that recognition, we came to council, as you may recall, for the budget of 2324 and were approved two positions identified as the assistant building official positions. We placed an ad and we hired two candidates, one with a background as an electrician and the other one as a background in carpentry. Two successful candidates, no, one is Mr. Liam Konings and the other one is Mr. Neil McGill. They were hired in August of 2023 and from that point, we put them through the training through NASBOA or the Nova Scotia Building Officials Association and they started their core... courses. It takes approximately one year, and recently, they completed their 10th course and were approved through the Nova Scotia Building Certification Board. The training was successful. We also were able to secure funding through Nezboa to pay for some of those courses, so that's a good news story as well. And with that, they are now soon to be Level 1 qualified, and they'll be able to administer the Building Code Act, the regulations and the building code. Section 5.2 of the Nova Scotia Building Code Act requires each municipal council to appoint a building official or building officials, and the appointment allows the building official to administer and enforce the Act, regulations and building code in their area of jurisdiction. And before you is a motion, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Terry. Are there any questions? Councillor Armstrong?
Just for clarification, so we will now have three full-time building inspectors.
Through you, Madam Chair, to councillor Armstrong. That is correct.
Great, thank you.
I have one question, if council would permit. Will we now hire more assistant building officials to replace the assistant building officials that have become, well, soon to be full-time building officials?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. It's a good question. Actually, my director, Javri, and I discussed that previous to council, and that's, yes, we will be looking at filling those positions as well.
Amazing, thank you. Love it. Okay, anything further? Questions? All right. The motion reads that municipal council hereby appoint Neil McGill and Liam Conings as building officials for the municipality of the County of Kings as required under section 5 subsection 2 of the Nova Scotia Building Code Act while employed with the municipality. Do I have a mover of this motion? Councillor Hurdle, councillor Allen, thank you. Any discussion on this motion? Any debate? Seeing none, all in favour or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, council. Moving to item nine, administration. So these motions are all to adopt policies. We require 70s notice when adopting new policies, and that notice was given at the September 17 special council meeting. So our first policy before us this evening is Policy Admin-01-008, Time of Council Meetings. The motion reads that municipal council adopt Policy Admin-01-008, Time of Council Meetings as attached to the October 1st, 2024 council agenda. Do I have a mover of the motion? Councillor Armstrong, seconded by councillor Burgess, thank you. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all in favour or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. Similar to before, we have had discussion on all of these and presentations from staff regarding these, either new policy or the changes to the policies. So all those recordings are available online, should you wish to watch us debate the merits of each one. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The second one reads that municipal council adopt Policy Admin-01-010, Presentations to Committee of the Whole as attached to the October 1st, 2024 council agenda. Do I have a mover of that motion? Moved by councillor Allen, seconded by councillor Burgess, thank you. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all in favour or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, council. Item C, the municipal council adopt Policy Admin-01-014, Parental Accommodations for Elected Officials as attached to the October 1st, 2024 council agenda. Do I have a mover of that motion? Councillor Davison, seconded by councillor Armstrong, thank you. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, all in favour or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item D, that municipal council adopt Policy Pro-10-003, Fire and Emergency Services Provider's Registration as attached to the October 1st, 2024 council agenda. Do I have a mover of this motion? Councillor Harding, seconded by councillor Allen, thank you. Any discussion on this particular motion? Seeing none, all in favour or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item E, Policy Fin-05-18. The motion reads that municipal council adopt Policy Fin-05-018, Community Grants as attached to the October 1st, 2024 council agenda. Do I have a mover of this motion? Moved by councillor Granger, seconded by councillor Burgess. Discussion on this motion? Councillor Hurdle.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. It's been brought to my attention that there is perhaps an oversight or a means to amend this policy. Reading through it, it would prevent any community group that may access currently the community hall grant or the playgrounds, parks and trails grant from applying for both. Now, there are a number of great community organisations within the county that I believe need both and apply for both, but currently, as worded, it would prevent that. I'm hoping that there's a way to amend that without delaying the adoption of this policy, and I'm told that staff may have a wording of this amendment on file. Is that available?
Is that available, Madam Clerk? Are we able to see some potential wording around an amendment? So we have, the motion has been made, and then we have a very short amendment that I'm going to read, to save councillor Hurdle. Do you want to read it?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. So we'll let you take that on.
That municipal council replace S.3.7 of the draft as presented and amended on September 17, 2024 with the following, 3.7. Organizations may apply to the community grants program through either council grants to organizations or for separate initiatives up to any two of the following: community festivals and special events, community hall assistance, community recreation programming assistance, Kings Vision, park, playground and trail assistance. Graduating event assistance is only available to the five applicable high schools and does not prevent those schools from applying for the other grants per this policy.
Okay. So if I've captured your intention correctly, the initial grant was written so that you could not apply for two programs, and that this was brought to the attention, was brought to my attention, was brought to your attention, that this presented an issue for certain community groups, and it is your wish to basically remove that barrier so that if you're applying for CHAP, you can also apply for parks, playground and assistance? That's capturing your attention?
Absolutely correct, yes.
Okay. Do I have a second for this amendment? Councillor Killam. Is there any discussion on this amendment this evening? Any questions of council before we proceed? Okay, I see none. So the motion has been moved and seconded. I have no comment. At this point, I call the question. All in favour or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, council. So the motion has been amended, so that amendment has now come towards the main motion. So now we go back to the main motion as amended with the wordy amendment. The councillor Hurdle has read for us already, which I will not repeat, but is on the screen in front of you. So you can see it. Are there any questions on the motion as amended? Any comments, any items for debate? Okay. Seeing none, all in favour or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. Thank you, council. The motion carries unanimously. Item F, Policy HR-06-03. The motion reads that municipal council repeal Policy HR-06-004, Sexual Harassment and Policy... Oh yeah, we did this last time. Okay. I'm going to read this again with my enunciation slightly different so it makes sense. The municipal council repeal Policy HR-06-004, Sexual Harassment, and Policy HR-06-005, Workplace Harassment Discrimination, and adopt, instead of those, Policy HR-06-023, Respectful Workplace as attached to the October 1st, 2024 council agenda. Do I have a mover of this motion? Moved by councillor Armstrong, seconded by councillor Burgess. Any discussion on this motion that we all understand? Okay. Seeing none, all in favour or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. And of course, these are all available in our agenda package, should you be interested in reading them or thinking about them. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item G, Policy Around Budget Management, which originated at the Budget and Finance, sorry, Audit and Finance Committee, which we've just renamed, and then came to committee and is now in front of us tonight. That municipal council adopt Policy Fin-05-028, Budget Management as attached to the October 1st, 2024 council agenda. Do I have a mover of that motion? Moved by Mayor Matar, a long-time member of the Audit and Finance Committee, and councillor Harding, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favour or against, please signify in the usual fashion. Are you tired of hearing me read motions yet, or holding up okay in there? Motion carried. And finally, we have item H, Repeal of Current and Adoption of Revised Planning Policies. So the motion reads that municipal council repeal planning policies, PLAN-09-001, Planning Policies, and repeal PLAN-09-002, Area Advisory Committee, and instead adopt Policies, PLAN-09-004, Administration of Planning Matters, and PLAN-09-005, Public Participation Program as attached to the October 1st, 2024 council agenda. Moved by councillor Granger with a smile, seconded by councillor Allen, also with a smile. Thank you. Any discussion on these motions, which are, I'm very excited about, I'll just add that. Okay. Seeing none, all in favour or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, council. Okay, we're at item 10, Engineering and Public Works, right? Oh no, we have one more, under H number 2. Okay. God forbid, we ended there. The motion reads that municipal council adopt amendments to Policy PLAN-09-003, Planning Advisory Committee, as attached to the October 1st, 2024 council agenda. Of course, this is directly related to the committee here, which is the Planning Advisory Committee that meets monthly and discusses all planning matters before they come to committee the whole or council, or both. Do I have a mover of this motion? Mayor Matar, seconded by councillor Davison. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all in favour or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. Thank you. Motion carried. Now I believe we're at item 10. Unless I've forgotten anything else? Yes, here we are. Oh, almost. Well, it's item 10A, while we're getting there, which is a tender, number 2424, for the regional blower replacement. And do we have Mike Edgar with us this evening, the manager of environmental services? Is this your first time presenting to council? Oh, I got to turn that off for you, sorry. It is, well, welcome. We're so happy to have you, first and last for some of us. But welcome to council, and thank you for being here, and good luck, and the floor is yours.
Good evening, council. I am here to present a request for decision with regards to the regional blower replacement project. That's not a good start. The intent is for council to award the tender 2424 Regional Blower Replacement Project to the top-scoring proponent identified as TNE Global Incorporated. The total award of this project is 206, sorry, 26383458, so that's 263,843.58 cents, including provisional items and non-recoverable HST. The additional blowers are required at the regional sewage treatment plant to ensure sufficient backup air supply for the aeration processes within cell 1 and cell 2. Just for clarification, the regional plant is located in Newmanus. This project was included in the 2425 approved capital budget, and the project budget was estimated at around $395,000. And TNE Global Incorporated received the highest score based on the scoring matrix outlined in the request for proposal. And there is the recommendation.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of Mike this evening? Councillor Hurdle and then Mayor Matar.
Two questions, if I may, through you, Deputy Mayor. First one is, and this is more for the benefit of those listening in and in attendance, can you tell us what a blower is, especially for this price?
Yes, through you, Deputy Mayor. Air blowers, sorry, is basically a large machine that's going to either compress, some compress air, others just move air in high volumes, and that's going to move it from a building through a mechanical means into aeration cells, which the diffusers then diffuse that air out into the pond. So it's just a mechanical piece of equipment that moves air, lots of it.
Great. My second question, and this is around the regional component. What we're potentially voting on is the $263,000, but that is just the Kings County component, correct? Not reflective of the total price, just what we will be paying as a partner within the regional sewer?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, that is the total cost of the project, so that still needs to be divvied up among the partners.
Okay.
Yep.
Even better. Thanks for that question, councillor Hurdle. Mayor Matar, go ahead.
So it's introducing oxygen to help the bugs work, right?
That's correct.
What about timing? When is it to happen? Do we have a drop dead date? Is it going to be done before winter?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. The delivery date is approximately 16 weeks after submittal of drawings, so it's going to be early spring.
Okay.
We're through kind of the high-demand season for oxygen right now within the facility.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councillor Harding, go ahead.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. Did we get any grant money through any of the provincial or federal governments on this project for this?
Through you, Madam Chair, or Deputy Mayor. I'd have to double-check that, but I'm pretty sure we did not. This was funded through the capital, a capital fund.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor, for the question. Any other questions? Okay, with that, I'll read the motion. The municipal council award tender number 2424 Regional Blower Replacement for a total of $263,843.58, including provisional items and non-recoverable HST, to TNE Global Inc. as described in the request for decision dated October 1st, 2024. Do I have a mover of this motion? Moved by councillor Harding, seconded by councillor Hurdle. Thank you. Any debate or discussion? Seeing none, all in favour or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. And Mike, you're sticking around for this next presentation as well. Sounds great. And Mike, you're sticking around for this next presentation as well, sounds great, so I'll invite you back up to the podium for item B, tender twenty four, thirty one, supply and delivery of a new crane truck. Okay, the floor is yours.
Through you, deputy mayor, I'm here to present, uh, this request for decision on behalf of Mr. Sharp, who is unable to attend tonight. Uh, so this request for decision is with regards to the supply and delivery of one, one ton crane truck. The intent is for council to award tender twenty four, thirty one, the supply and delivery of one ton crane truck for public, the public works department. This one additional truck is required for, as a replacement for existing truck number twenty four. The Bruce Auto Group proposed a Ford F five fifty truck chassis outfitted with a eleven foot Voth, sorry, Voth service body, a thirty two hundred pound stellar service crane, hydraulic outriggers, onboard mounted generator and compressor, racks and safety lighting, all that meet the requirements stated by the public works department. The purchase of the train truck, crane truck was approved in the twenty twenty four, twenty five budget. And there's your recommendation.
All right, perfect. So approved in the budget, but the tender award comes to council.
Yes.
Yeah, which is why we see it here. All right, councillor Granger, questions?
Thank you, deputy mayor, through you. You're doing great, by the way, for your first time out. Just wondering why there was only a single bidder?
Uh, through you, deputy mayor, we went out to a, a public tender and that was the only bidder that, that was interested in providing, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Fair enough. Anything further, councillor?
No, thank you.
Okay. Uh, councillor Hurdle, you're next.
Uh, thank you, and deputy mayor, through you. Is based on the presentation received to council during budget, what, is there any significant deviations or changes from the budget to the tender process that should be highlighted in this recommendation?
Um, through you, deputy mayor, I just, I guess I just need a little bit more clarification on the actual question.
Sure. Uh, I'm just wondering if anything majorly has changed, uh, from when council was first exposed to this cost, uh, in the budget to this point?
Um, this isn't a file that I'm, I'm completely comfortable with, but I would say there hasn't been any major change, but I could get the manager of public works to follow up with you on that as well.
Perfect, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Anything further from council this evening? Mr. Carrigan, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, deputy mayor. I can address that there has been no substantial changes from what we originally planned on at the start of the year.
One crane truck for another, looks like. Okay. Sounds good. Anything further from council? Seeing none, uh, the motion reads, I haven't read it yet, right? No? Okay. The municipal council award tender twenty four dash three one, supply and delivery of new crane truck in the amount of two hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred and eighty dollars and thirty three cents, including applicable non-rebated HST to Bruce Leasing Limited as described in the request for decision dated October first, 2024. Could I have a mover of the motion? Councillor Allen, councillor Davison, thank you. Anything further? Debate, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor or against, please signify in the usual, hang on, Kevin, councillor Davison, geez, I don't do that very often, but I've done it twice tonight, I'm so sorry. Councillor Davison.
That's all right. We've come up with Kevin Siller.
Kevin Siller.
That's what we've come up with already. Um, just a quick question I was gonna ask earlier. The new truck, um, or sorry, what do we do with the old truck? Do we, is that traded back in or is it under lease?
Uh, through you, deputy mayor, uh, I think the intent was to see if we could repurpose that truck, either turning it into a flatbed or, um, another purpose within the department.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Okay, question, thank you. Are there any other questions? Any final questions? Anything further? All right, the motion's been moved and seconded, right into the record. I'll call the question, all in favor or against, please signify in the usual fashion. Councillor Kellum, how do you vote? You weren't in on the conversation, so we'll just abstain, abstain, we'll count you as, you probably agree, well, we'll count that as a yes for the record. Thank you. Um, okay, that concludes engineering and public works. Thank you, uh, Mr. Edgar, for being with us this evening and, um, yes, enjoy your evening, thank you. Item eleven, financial services. Uh, Mr. Scott McKay is with us and potentially Mr. Livingston, although maybe just Mr. McKay. Uh, not that that, not that we're disappointed. We're, we're. Item A. We'll go, we'll go right to you, Scott, sorry. I think I need a break. It's almost, it's been a lot of motion. Um, Mr. McKay, the floor is yours for item eleven A, project on banking and investment services. Go ahead.
Well, thank you, deputy mayor and to council, I appreciate your time this evening. So the item currently before you is a recommendation for the selection of a financial services provider for the municipality for the next period of five years. So to give you a little bit of background, the municipality last undertook a review of Benet Banking Services in the summer and fall of 2019, and at that time, staff recommended and council approved a five-year agreement with the Bank of Nova Scotia for the provision of these services. As per the municipality's procurement policy, section fifteen three, banking services falls within the category of special services, much like legal, audit and engineering services. Section fifteen three specifically states that general banking services will be acquired by public advertisement at intervals not greater than every five years, and these services shall be contracted on a one-year term to be renewed on an annual basis up to five-year maximum on terms satisfactory to the municipality. This past summer, municipal staff released a non-binding request for proposals for banking and investment services to commence on November first, 2024 through October thirty first of 2029, which seems like an awful long time away. In response to the NRFP, three bids were received. A team of municipal staff then independently reviewed and scored the three submissions, and the outcome of the review was a recommendation for municipal banking services to be provided by the Bank of Nova Scotia for a five-year term. The deposit rate provided by the Bank of Nova Scotia, by the way, has been enhanced by point one seven percent over the current rate provided, reflecting a competitive environment. The, as previously mentioned, the Bank of Nova Scotia is the municipality's current provider, so there is really not much of a concern with transition to the, the new provider. So the recommendation before you this evening on this is that municipal council direct the CAO to execute an agreement for the provision of primary financial services with the Bank of Nova Scotia for a five-year period commencing November first, 2024, as described in the October first, 2024 request for decision.
Thank you very much, Mr. McKay. Questions from council? Madam clerk, are you, your butt, your microphone is haunted because it's, it keeps telling me you want to talk. All right. Uh, councillor Hurdle, we'll go to you first, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, deputy mayor, through you. Of the other submissions, the two others was, were the others, was there an increase in the additional rates from the others? We're seeing zero point one seven percent from Bank of Nova Scotia. Was this the highest increase in what they've offered?
The highest increase, uh, through you, deputy mayor, uh, I couldn't tell you that because I don't know what the other ones offered five years ago. We didn't go back and look at the losing bids from five years ago to compare what they had done with their, with their rates, but I can tell you that, um, we were, we were delighted with the, uh, the selection of the, of the successful bid comparatively.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Anything further from council this evening for Mr. McKay? Okay, seeing none. Mr. McKay graciously read the motion for us already. Uh, could I have a mover? Mayor Matart and the secondary councillor Allen, thank you. Debate or discussion on this motion regarding the provision of primary financial services with the Bank of Nova Scotia? Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. I see we have Director Barr instead of Mr. Livingston, okay? Welcome to the podium.
Even more disappointing than Scott up there.
I wasn't gonna say it, so. Um, thank you for joining us. Item B, resolution of pre-approval of debenture issuance subject to interest rate. Uh, welcome, Director Barr, and the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, deputy mayor. So yes, this presentation is just simply a resolution for pre-approval of debenture issuance subject to interest rate. Uh, Mike Livingston was the preparer of the RFD, but I'm just filling in for him this evening. So, uh, the Nova Scotia Municipal Finance Division, so the acronym that's being used here is NSMF. Um, we don't have an official acronym yet that we're using from them, but not to be confused, it's NSFM, um, of the Nova Scotia Department of Finance and Treasury Board, issues debentures twice annually in the spring and in the fall, and they require a pre-approval resolution from council for any debenture applications on our part. So the format of the resolution is specified specifically by the NSMF and that's contained in the, in the supporting appendix. So this application or this submission for debenture funds relates to the regional desludge and aeration projects, so it's project number one seven four four zero one, um, in the annual budget. It had a total project cost of just under six million dollars and we're requiring a debenture in the amount of four point seven, um, and it would be over twenty years. The maximum interest rate is set at six point five percent. That will not be the interest rate that would be there, that's when they go up for the debenture call, they, uh, want to have an interest rate that's approved by council that's well in excess, so they don't end up having it be greater than what council has already approved. They want to have that approval with confidence when they, when they go through that process. So we've reached a point now, after a couple of years of expenditures related to that desludge and aeration project, that we're going to debenture the funds that we've expended in relation to it. So quite simply, the, the resolution is just, uh, that municipal council approve the resolution for pre-approval of debenture issuance subject to interest rate as detailed in appendix A attached to the October first, 2024 request for decision.
Thank you very much, Dr. Barr. Um, any questions before we look to move the motion? No questions? Pretty, oh. Councillor Armstrong.
I'm using my calculator, so, sorry.
Go ahead.
So the amount of this debenture is only our portion of the six million dollars.
So, uh, through you, deputy mayor, to councillor Armstrong, so it actually is for the entire portion because we control the asset and the, uh, the, uh, the debt associated with it, although we put out to the individual regional sewer partners, see option if they want to pay in advance or participate in the debenture, and one of the partners is contributing funds in advance and not participating in the debenture.
So that's why this is only for four point seven.
So that's why it's only four point seven instead of the six million.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Anything further? Seeing none, uh, the motion's been read, could I have a mover of this motion? Moved by councillor Armstrong, seconded by councillor Davison, thank you. Anything further? Debate or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please vote accordingly on your pen pads. Motion carried, thank you. And finally, under financial services, item eleven C, write-off of deactivated property tax accounts, back to Mr. McKay, manager of revenue. Uh, go ahead, Mr. McKay.
Well, thank you once again. Uh, the item, uh, next item I have for you is a request to write off a number of now deactivated property tax accounts that have an uncollectible balance or balances outstanding, and these are listed in appendix A of the request for decision. Each year, Property Valuation Services Corporation, or PVSC, provides to the municipality an up-to-date assessment role. Staff review year-over-year changes and a list of newly deactivated accounts is generated for review. In rare cases, accounts are deactivated with outstanding balances still remaining. The most common cause of this is the movement, abandonment, or taking out of commission of, of mobile homes across the county. Since there's often a time lag between the occurrence of the abandonment or movement and PVSCs catching up to the change, charges can continue to be levied against these property tax accounts. The mobile homes referenced in this request for decision each have a separate property tax account from the land upon which they were located and were owned by different persons than the land. Municipal staff did request a legal opinion regarding the transfer of the outstanding balances to that of the land's accounts, but were advised that this would not be in line with either the assessment or municipal government acts. These accounts are occasionally discovered when they become so far past due that they land on our municipal property tax sale listing. In these cases, contact is made with PVSC to amend these accounts appropriately, and staff does keep a running account of what are deemed to be uncollectible accounts. This property listing is reviewed annually and the properties are added accordingly. The associated GL is called allowance for doubtful accounts. So the recommendation is that municipal council approve the write-off of the outstanding property tax accounts listed in appendix A of the October first, 2024 request for decision, debiting GL zero one four four five one one zero zero, allowance for doubtful accounts for the total amount of seven thousand four hundred and seventy two dollars.
Thank you, Mr. McKay. Any questions? Councillor Hurdle first and councillor Armstrong.
Uh, thank you, deputy mayor, through you. Just so I'm fully understanding what's happening here, uh, PVSC has evaluated a property at a certain rate. The home on the property's moved, uh, prior to the evaluation, but they've evaluated at a rate unequal to the current condition. We've moved forward with the current rate and it stayed on the books and accumulated interest until it's come to our attention. Now we're simply writing off the total number. Why is it being done as a write-off as opposed to a correction of the assessment from PVSC?
It, it has always been our, our practice to write these accounts off because we do allow, we do, um, how's the best way to word this, through you, deputy mayor, we do keep adding these amounts to that allowance for doubtful accounts, and we monitor it every year. So we know right now there might be, say, a quarter million dollars worth of properties that we question whether or not we'll ever be able to get, uh, money for, uh, property tax accounts. These properties are in that, so we will essentially move that balance out of that and then our tax clerk will make the adjustment from an accounting standpoint on the actual tax account so it kind of balances out. But it has always been our practice to write these off with council's approval.
So is this a more efficient method, uh, or a better accounting practice than simply correcting the assessed value with PVSC? Or maybe I'm wrong in my initial understanding of, of the reason why there's value when there's actually no, uh, no value or an incorrect value?
Okay. Well, uh, through you, through you, deputy mayor, I would, I would say there are some occasions where PVSC comes back to us and say, hey, we made a mistake three years ago. In that case, we would make corrections because it was a mistake that they made. Often that does not occur and it's just, starting now, the account has been deactivated, it no longer exists. We've got the, we've got an account with money owing on it, there's no mobile home on the property anymore, it's been moved to another province or destroyed or whatnot. Uh, the easiest way for us to deal with that in appropriate manner, we feel, is, is through the write-off through council.
And, and this is acceptable accounting practice, not in deviation from a normal accounting standard?
I don't see any reason why that would be anything out of, I'll ask the accountant in the room.
Mm-hmm. Dr. Barr.
Yeah, and, and to clarify a little bit more, this is in relation to the assessment associated with the mobile home more so than the property itself, and we inquired with, for legal advice in terms of whether this could be transferred to the property in terms of an outstanding, so that it's something that we're able to apply to the property and it's, it's not. It's under section one thirty-three two, um, it's only in relation to the mobile home itself that we would have a lien and where that physically isn't there anymore. Uh, there's nothing to be able to lien, there's nothing associated with it, we're unable to recover the funds from the mobile homeowners, so we have set up an allowance for doubtful accounts for situations such as this, so the write-off of this against that would be in accordance with, with gap. If that's your, if that's your question, I guess, specifically?
Satisfactory, council? Or councillor?
As much as it can be, yes, absolutely, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Councillor Armstrong.
There's, there's numbers attached to these, um, I don't know, it's not a, a PID number, but it's a number, assessment account number. So, you know, devil's advocate here, how do we know they just didn't move it to another spot? Like, how do we know that that mobile home doesn't exist on somebody else's land now? And that maybe that's, you know, their way of getting out of paying taxes is And that maybe that's, you know, their way of getting out of paying taxes is they're just moving it from lot to lot, and when it starts adding up, they move someplace else.
Certainly. Through you, Deputy Mayor, I can tell you that each of the accounts on here, the owner does not own another property now in the municipality of the County of Kings. So, if the mobile home moved to a new location, there's nothing we can do to chase down the old owner, the new owner would hopefully now have a new assessment account number that would at least start to be paid in the future. It is our understanding, for the most part, that these are, were dilapidated, mobile homes that have gone into disrepair and been taken out of service.
Okay.
Is that okay, councillor?
Sure.
Sure.
Thank you.
No worries. I have one question, if council will permit. I believe that under the municipal financial indicators, the MFCIs, the Financial Condition Index for municipalities, and all municipalities are given a rating, and if I am not mistaken, one of those ratings is our, the rated which we collect taxes and how much we write off every year. Would this be included, and I know we have an excellent rating, so, across the board, actually, not just in this department, but is this an amount that would be included in that Financial Condition Index?
Well, I would think it would be if it is a write-off, and I'm staring at the...
Director Barr?
Deputy Mayor, you'll have to give me a few moments just to look up that FCI, and I will get back to you with an answer on that.
Thank you, no worries. Doesn't affect my opinions on the vote or on the motion. Just curious because, you know, we're talking about our ability to collect taxes, which is our main source of revenue, and I'm just curious if it factors into that rating that we get by the province. Okay, any further questions? Okay, seeing none. Mr. McKay did read our motion for us, so I will not repeat it, but it's on the screen in front of you. Do I have a mover of this motion? Moved by councillor Burgess, seconded by councillor Harding, thank you. Anything further debate or discussion on this motion for the allowance of doubtful accounts? Seeing none, all in favor or otherwise, please signify in the usual fashion. Motion carries unanimously. Item 12, we have finished most of the official business, we do have it in camera. Well, we have councillor Killam's motion, we have some boarding committee reports, and we have comments from the public left, and after which we'll be moving in camera for a closed session. So, that's just the order of things going forward. Item 12, boarding committee reports, do we have any committee of council reports that anyone wishes to raise this evening? How about any external boards and committee reports from council? Okay, that was quick, seeing none. Moving on to item 13, other business. I will go to you, councillor Killam, for your motion. I will note that item two on your motion was actually taken care of already, so you had requested that we ask our solicitor to provide a legal opinion as to whether the municipality has any jurisdiction on banning the aerial spraying of glyphosate. We do not, and that was given to us in opinion from our solicitor just today. So, if you don't mind, we can maybe sort of scratch that, and that's in the municipal government act, we do not have the authority. However, the other two are fair game.
Thank you. I was approached, as I mentioned before, by the community to revisit this, what we have already done, to reintroduce it back to the province for a reconsideration on banning aerial spraying, actually, overall, in Kings County, if possible. Yeah, and I was starting to talk about a little bit about the community itself and the residents that are living there under this threat, as they feel very strongly about this as being a threat to their health and their land, water, and biodiversity, which I do agree with them, and I would like to see this thing banned in its totality or put a moratorium on the whole issue until such time as in the motion that can be proven that it's not, not or is a threat to the community. As I alluded to, that folks up there now, if they hear a helicopter, if they hear a plane, all of a sudden their antennas go up, the radar's up, and they're afraid that that's what's going to happen next, is the spraying's going to happen. So, they're continually under this kind of a threat, and as everyone knows, not everyone, but it's well documented that they have to spend time in the woods to prevent the spraying to happen, which is ridiculous in these times to have to have residents do this sort of thing to keep feeling, to keep the community safer in their mind. So, that's why I brought the motion forward, and I'm just hoping that the provincial government, I guess they have the jurisdiction, will take another look at it, and I do understand that possibly they're, even Health Canada may be taking another look at it, but I haven't heard that officially as yet, but it seems the province, if it's okay with Health Canada, it's okay with them, and, but there's ample evidence that show that it can be a problem for a community, for their land and for their water and the biodiversity. So, I guess I'm just hoping that maybe the whole thing will be looked at again and get a moratorium put on it, as is done in other areas, it has done in other areas. So, that's my motion, and I'm representing the residents on that motion tonight.
Okay. Do you want to read it into the record? Do you want me to do it?
I'll do it.
You do it.
Yeah. It's 13-1. That municipal council write a letter to premier Tim Houston and environment and climate change minister Tim Hallman requesting that a moratorium be placed on aerial herbicide spraying until a formal report requisitioned by the provincial government on net benefits or net losses of such activity to the residents of Nova Scotia can be obtained. Nice, I'll move.
Thank you, councillor. Do we have a secondary of the motion? Seconded by councillor Granger. Is there discussion on this motion? Councillor Allen, and then councillor Davison.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. My question is, should the wording be, a moratorium be placed on aerial herbicide spraying on forest land? Because occasionally farmers do the same thing on agricultural land.
That would be, I think that's the intention, right? That is the intention, so that's a friendly?
And there is another method of doing this without spraying, so that's the other port of it.
So, we'll just, we'll sneak some words in there. Aerial herbicide spraying of forested areas?
Yes.
Okay? And that's okay with you, councillor?
That's fine.
And councillor? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Davison?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just want to say once, hopefully when we get this letter written to the government, as far as I'm concerned, it disgusts me that our provincial government is actually still allowing this to happen. This, these chemicals not only injure people, we lose a lot of our animals because of this type of spraying, so I give you kudos, Mr. Killam, on bringing that up, because this has been something that's been going on for years around here, and it's airborne, the way it's sprayed, it doesn't just go into one area, it goes into several areas. It's extremely poisonous, it's cancer-causing, and I hope the government, and I hope, just with what we send off as a letter, I hope the government takes this serious, because this is an issue that is dealing with the health of Nova Scotians, and they're getting sick. So, I commend you for bringing that up.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Hurdle?
I have one somewhat higher level concern on this, and then one's more specific to the motion. The higher level concern is I worry that council is trying to become a letter-writing committee as opposed to an actual acting form of government, and I do recognize we have an obligation to work within our scope to advocate on behalf of the interests and the goals of municipalities, but in writing letters on issues that are outside of the scope of the municipality, I feel it improperly gives hope or thoughts or ideas to the public that we can somehow affect change in broader level discussions that are far outside what the council is here to do based on the MGA and the reason municipalities exist. So, my concern is we are overreaching and completely unrelated to the merits of this specific. My concern is we're overreaching, especially, you know, in writing letters on the scope of things that are far outside of what we do. Now, more specific to the motion, aerial herbicides is very broad. I know the intent is around glyphosate specifically, or at least that's been the underlying discussion that I've read. Is there opportunity to amend and make it specific to glyphosate as a friendly amendment from the mover?
That's a question. I will bop over to councillor Killam. Do you consent to having added "of glyphosate" of forested areas?
Well, I, yeah, I'm two minds here. If we put it particularly to that chemical, that means that they can aerial spray other items on the, or other chemicals on the land too, if that's how we want to go there. I personally would definitely like to see it, the aerial spraying stopped, period.
So, your motion, councillor, so if you deem it unfriendly, it shall be deemed?
Pardon?
Unfriendly. So, if you don't consent, then it's unfriendly, and councillor Hurdle could move...
Well, I think it is, and only, I'm trying to respect the residents' ask, and I don't want to see that in there, so.
Thank you, councillor.
Unfriendly, I'm unfriendly.
Councillor Hurdle, you yourself are not unfriendly, however, your potential amendment has been deemed a little unfriendly. Would you like to move it and let council decide the friendliness of this?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. So, we have had it moved, we've had it friendlierly amended, and now councillor Hurdle will move that we add the words "of glyphosate" between the words "spraying" and "of forested areas." Is there a secondary to include "of glyphosate"? Going once, twice? Okay, the motion to amend fails for lack of a secondary. Apologies, councillor. Anything further to add on the motion as it currently stands? While you have your mic.
Not at this time, no.
Thank you, councillor. Mayor Matar?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just again, speaking historically so that it's clear for the record, it may have been a previous council and not, a little bit longer than two years ago, but it was the glyphosate issue that was brought to us in the first instance, and, but aerial spraying writ large was also the topic, and we did all of the recent, much more research than a municipal body would normally do in such a circumstance, but we considered it to be a serious issue, certainly the communities involved on the Norris Mountain considered it to be a very serious issue. And the letter we wrote both referred to glyphosate, and I recall one sentence in the letter that simply said that municipal council has been approached by its citizens, that its citizenry made the strong point, and we accepted that point to act as their advocate in saying that there is no social license in the municipality of the County of Kings for aerial spraying of forests to take place, because all of the points were made concerning the impact on the waterways, the impact on certain species of fauna, of flora. And we even went so far as, and we wrote that letter and made that point, because we felt that one of the purposes of municipal government is to advocate on behalf of our citizens even outside our jurisdiction, that is, the advocacy point being outside our jurisdiction, one which we had no authority over, therefore, we couldn't issue a moratorium, but we could certainly approach the authorities, in this case, which included Health Canada, the provincial government, and the federal government, and tell them that that was the information that we had received, the information that we had heard, that there was a bit of to-ing and fro-ing in the Supreme Court of Canada at that time, but the last decision had come down against our position. All that said, we still took the position that there was no social license, and we wanted to represent the opinions of our residents on that particular point, because it's like the swimming pool, you know? If you pour yellow water in one end of the pool, it goes to the other end of the pool, even though that your target was the far end of the pool. So, there's drift associated with spraying, and even with the best of intentions, if a person gets a license from the government to spray one acreage, it's pretty hard to confine to that one acreage if you're dropping it from an airplane. There are arguments, of course, by those that use the practice, and, but they realize that they don't have, they don't have the public behind them on this particular issue, so they don't bother to come before us, but I'm sure they have strong points to make about how much more efficient it is and how much more expensive it is to spray at land level. But that's, I just wanted to be clear, this is, we have done this, I'm not against the motion to reinforce the previous correspondence that we sent, but I do not want our residents to feel that this is the first time that we, our first rodeo on this particular point.
Thank you, Mayor Matar, well said. Before we go to councillor Granger, could we add that third bit, that council send a resolution based on the above to NSFM for the fall meeting? Can we add that to this motion to prevent us from having to do two motions? Are you okay with that? I'm wondering if you could add that in there, Yanni, just so we can all package it as one. Councillor Granger, you're up next.
Actually, Mayor Matar stole all my good stuff, so, but I do have to respectfully disagree with councillor Hurdle. I don't think that it's an overreach to be part of a collective voice for something that's super important, not just for the people that are in that area, but for everyone. It doesn't just stay where it is, it moves around. So, us advocating for our own citizens is, I think, one of the best things we could do as a municipal government. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Is there anything further? We have the motion moved, seconded, slightly amended. I'll read it one more time so we're all on the same page, after which we'll call the question. The motion reads, the municipal council write a letter to premier Tim Houston, environment and climate change minister Timothy Hallman, requesting that a moratorium be placed on aerial herbicide spraying of forested a moratorium be placed on aerial herbicide spraying of forested areas until a formal report requisitioned by the provincial government on net benefits or net losses of such activity to the residents of Nova Scotia can be obtained, and that municipal council send a resolution based on the above to the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities for their fall meeting. Okay, moved, seconded, amended. Anything further? Councillor Killen?
Question, deputy mayor?
Yes.
Who will bring this forward to the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipality meeting?
I think what we would do is forward Mayor Matart's letter with this motion and the minutes of our meeting to the NSFM Resolutions Committee, which I believe they have, or their executive, and ask that it be considered. Or, yeah, depending on, I guess there will be a new council for that meeting, so we can entrust staff, in case none of us are back, that, if none of us are here, then we will give it to staff to carry the torch, I guess.
Please.
Yeah, I mean, you can still go to the conference in November if you want.
Really?
Just to make sure.
I assume that that wasn't in the picture, because I haven't re-offered and I didn't know.
Still.
How that all goes, but I'd love to go.
All right. Well, if none of us are here, we'll pass it off to staff with much thanks. Mayor Matart, anything further? No, your light's off. It's been moved, it's been seconded, it's been debated, it's been discussed. All in favor or against, please signify now The motion carries unanimously. Thank you council. Comments from the public, the moment you've all been waiting for. Are there any comments from the public this evening? Come on up, if you could give us your name and your civic for the record, that would be handy. Oh, and I gotta turn your, oh, before we go to you, I think Mr Barr has something to chime in?
I just wanted to answer your question about the financial condition indicator. So there's only one indicator that relates to uncollected taxes, and it simply looks at the cumulative uncollected taxes of a municipality against their current year's revenues. Our municipality runs about 3.3%, the rural average is about eight. So this particular write-off wouldn't have an impact on that, and there isn't another indicator. I guess you could argue that it would have a positive impact on it, but it would be negligible because of the amount, so.
Much appreciated, thank you. I like that answer, thank you. Apologies, come on forward.
No problem. When you say civic, you mean my address?
Your address, sorry, yes, just let us know where you're from.
Sure, sure. Thank you deputy mayor, council. My name's John Stocker, live 2157 English Mountain Road in Colebrook. I am the treasurer of the Colebrook Community Association, so I was very interested in the discussion and outcome of FIN 0518, the communities grants. And I want to first off thank councillor Hurdle and deputy mayor for including the revised language there. It certainly softened the blow that I was a little bit worried about. But I'm going to challenge everyone here and say that longer term, it still might end up injuring our association. We have been considering applying for the community recreation programming assistance grants, but now that would be off the table for us. You might be, you know, curious why we would, can you continue to look out and apply for these different grants? Well, Colebrook, as you know, is not a village, it's not a town, and there are, you know, that's the specific area of funding pools that we have access to. I pulled some numbers up here that I showed at our annual general meeting in February. This is from the 2023-24 budget. And I also showed this most recently at our, we just hosted a district six candidate forum at our Heritage Hall just last week. And some of this was a little bit enlightening to people there, so I just wanted to share. So out of those, the 2023-2024 timeframe, the PPT Parks Playground and Trails grants, and the CHAP Community Hall Assistance Program grants, those funds were about $205,000. It was $205,000, and that's what we were able to go and target and get a little bit of money out of. There are other grants out there that we would love to be able to tap into, but because of our status as not being a town or a village, we're precluded from those. The sibling grant pool coming out of FIN 0519, the Town and Village Recreation Fund. Now, simply because we're not a town or village, these funds are just off the table, you know, just based on the stats. And that's a similar amount of money. This is $205,000, thereabouts, with a further 72 or whatever it was from that year out of the councillor grants that, again, not eligible for because we had leveraged PPT and CHAP grants. So, you know, looking at the 19, the Town and Village one, you know, included in there is funding for full-time recreation managers in there. I think it's around $20,000 per village. Now, we're just a volunteer group, we don't have employees, you know, we're just doing this on our own. So we don't have people to go out and write grants for us, you know, pay to do that. We go and do that ourselves, and we offer up what little recreation activities we could. So this is why we might want to go and look at those things. Anyway, so I thank you for being able to share that, and look forward to working with the next council to maybe find a little more equity with non-Town and Village communities, including Colebrook. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Stocker. I will say the structure of municipal government in Nova Scotia leaves much to be desired, and this is one of the consequences of the current structure that has been around forever and ever and ever. Councillor Burgess?
Yeah, just a question of clarification. I'm not sure for staff specifically, but I know that Centerville charges an area rate for their recreation, so would Colebrook not get the same tax funding from the area rate as well as the grants that they're applying for?
No, I appreciate that. I'd like to mention that, yes, we do. Our association is registered with joint stocks as a society, recreation-oriented society. We collect $30 per household in Colebrook area rate, which the municipality takes a whopping 4% as commission fee, like that's Amex-level commission fee, which is a little D in my bonnet there too as well. But yes, we do collect that. That represents around 45%, 46% of our total revenue, and then we get, you know, I'm not sure what the percentage is, but last year, this year we got, we received $14,000 or $15,000 from PPT and CHAP for looking after the four parks and playgrounds, the Crosby Trail, and the Heritage Hall that we look after.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public this evening? Come on up.
Hi, my name's David Bain, 1293 Bains Road outside of Canning.
Just speak up a tiny bit, Mr Bain.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
So I'm really very unsure of myself here. I just came on this very late in the day, and my understanding is that the CES is being dropped from the MPS as a housekeeping amendment through the PAC. Is this correct?
So we made some houses, there's a list in the package of all of the amendments that were made to the?
I'll read that, you know, in reference to 511B. So it's to replace implementing the practices in the municipality's community engagement strategy with a public participation program informed by the municipality's engagement policies. So, you know, at that PAC meeting, Laura Mosher gave clarity as to, housekeeping amendments are limited to planning modifications that do not change the intent or application of planning documents. But if you remove the CES, which is, the essence of that is to implement it, how are you not changing the intent of that policy? So for it to be a housekeeping amendment, it just seems a disingenuous attempt by the planning department through the PAC to achieve an agenda of removing policies that they obviously disagree with, so that they can have their agendas put into place. I guess I'm just so confused, like I don't understand how it could possibly go into the classification of a housekeeping amendment. People worked from the community, municipality for years to create the CES. For me, I look at it as a cornerstone of the MPS, and here it's being replaced as a housekeeping item. It just seems disingenuous. I heard councillor Armstrong speak at the forum, and they said, yeah, what we're doing now is great. I'll take a phone call from anybody. That's not what the CES intended and required of the municipality. That may satisfy you, or it may satisfy council, but it is not the intention of the CES. The CES required bringing on an officer for public engagement, it required a website, but mostly, it actually empowered community members or communities when council made decisions that were going to be highly impactful to the community. I heard, or I read Scott Conrad said, you know, it was never enacted, so I removed it in your correspondence with me directly. I heard Mayor Matart at a public council say, no, we're not removing it, we're just going to modify it. But when I contacted the municipality, there was no one assigned, no personnel assigned to modify it, there was no timeline to modify it. That was in January 2023. I just, I don't understand. That is not the way government's supposed to work. I consider it illegal according to policy requirements for the municipal council to follow, to just simply remove a policy without due process, and to fabricate a due process through the planning department. I'm confounded. And, you know, if someone can explain to me why I'm so misguided, I would love to understand because I'm so disappointed in what my expectations of government should be. Municipal government is important. You make massive decisions. Fighting aerial spraying is important. It's incredibly important if it's done in a way that harms the public. It's just, it's important. Does anyone have anything to convince me that what I'm construing is incorrect? I would love to hear it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr Bain, for your comments. Anything further in terms of comments from the public this evening? Okay, so we will be moving into closed session. At this point, staff let me know that we will not be returning, that none of the business that we're discussing in camera requires any motions to come out of public session in two. So that's all she wrote, though this is it. This is the adjournment of our final council meeting of this current council, and I expect that there may be a few comments. You don't have to stay for them, folks are getting their jackets on, it's okay. But I expect there might be a few closing remarks. Councillor Armstrong?
Thank you. I always get to go first. Well, as the deputy mayor has pointed out, this is our last meeting as a group around this horseshoe. We won't sit here again. I just want to take an opportunity to thank all my fellow councillors, our mayor, and of course, our staff, not just the ones we see here, but all the ones in the background too. Oh, I'm getting choked up. I believe that while we've been sitting in this horseshoe, we have carried out our discussions and made decisions with grace, respect, and compassion in the best interest of those we serve, even though some people may not see it that way. So I just want to pass along my heartfelt thanks to all of you. It's been an honor. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Armstrong. Just turn my own light off instead of yours. I'm falling apart. Mayor Matart?
Thank you deputy mayor. This is, as has been said, this is our last opportunity to sit here and express to one another our appreciation for how well we've worked together. We sat down at the beginning of our term, we set our agenda, we set our five-year strategic plan. We've done extremely well moving forward with that, but through a COVID period, which makes it frankly impossible to accomplish all that we set out to do. Nevertheless, it's in motion. Those things that we haven't done are in motion. So I'm appreciative of the collegiality, the respect that each person around this table has shown to one another, to the group as a whole, to the public. We sat down saying that everyone who disagreed with what was on the table should express their disagreement in order that those who they thought were of another mind might be convinced to their side. And that's the way we've conducted affairs. That's the way all councils should conduct their affairs. So I'm grateful, I'm emotional too. Next council meeting is going to be all about the newbies, all about the folks that are re-elected around this table, and all about the new folks who are coming in. So we want it to remain, I think, all about them. So, last chance. Staff, you've been the best. People in the back, and people in the front. We couldn't have asked for better than we got. We had a tough road ahead. These were not easy times. COVID times were not easy times. So it took a lot of grace on your behalf to get through those times, and I congratulate you for it, I thank you for it. And we'll see you at the next time we gather together around a restaurant for another type of celebration. Thank you.
Thank you mayor. Councillor Killen?
Well, I guess I want to say something along those lines. Peter, or Mayor Matart, you covered a lot of emotional aspects of why we're here and how we got along. I really appreciate working with this council. I've sat on a lot of councils, and this one is a great council. And we've done a lot of work without a big problem that I can see. And I really, really appreciate the staff that I've worked with over the four years. It's great, and a lot of familiar faces that I've, I guess I'm showing my age now, to go back a long time. And it's great to see you, and great to see the new faces and people that I did not know when I arrived here. I guess mostly I'd like to thank the folks that elected me to represent them. It's been an honor, a privilege, and I always felt a part of the communities and their wants, and try to do what we can to help them out, help them along, help them up. And I guess, geez, I'm getting emotional. I just want to say, see you later, and we'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Hurdle?
Thank you, and this also is my last council meeting. As everybody knows, I haven't re-offered. As everybody knows, I haven't reoffered. I am taking a journey on another path, so this message will be short because this will not be the last time you hear from me. I look forward to representing many in the very near future. I have a message to the next council if they're so willing to listen, and that is my message. Always, when you sit down at council, come in with that open mind, the ability to consider the arguments, the debate, the thoughts put forward by your colleagues. Even this evening, I came in with a thought and an idea that I may choose to vote one way, but it was the arguments and reasoning set forward by my colleagues at this table that allowed me to hear a different point and change my mind and change my vote. That's the reason we're here, to be able to come together in council and represent those who have put us here, to be able to listen and consider those thoughts and engage in a cordial discourse and debate. I'd really like to thank those who have put their confidence in me to represent them in District Six for these last four years. It's been an amazing journey and has only opened my heart to the potential opportunities of what further representation may bring. I've grown to love the community engagement. I thought I liked it when I started and it's only grown in traction as I've gone forward. So in the next little while, I look forward to hearing from everybody and thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anything further from council? Okay. I'll wrap things up by saying, when I started eight years ago on council, the tone was not what it is today. The air was thick, the air was tense, and things, it was scary, actually, if I'm being completely honest. Like the vibe, the debate was not healthy and it was not a safe place to have reasonable discussion about how we see the future of our communities. And this council, the last council and this council owe an enormous debt to Peter. Just, and Janet, and Janet too. For leading us out of the mud and the darkness and into the light and into a place where we're all safe to speak our mind, where the rules of order are fairly enforced and where we can have healthy and productive discussion and debate about the future of this organization, which I think has come a tremendous way. We've got excellent leadership, excellent staff, and into a much brighter future. And we will never be able to repay you for your years of service, Mayor Matar, and we will miss you tremendously. It's quite unfair, actually. If we could just clone you and keep you forever, that'd be wonderful. But truly magnificent, distinguished, fearless mayor, and we're really lucky to have you. So thank you. Thank you to everybody here, here. Yeah, we've led, I believe we've led with great love for this area, and I'm very proud of all we've accomplished and I'm proud in each and every one of you. So with that, we'll move this train along. But I've lost my agenda, as usual. But I think the next thing is in front of me on the screen. So the final motion I will read in public session this evening is that council adjourn to move into closed session in accordance with Sections 22, subsection 2B and E, Municipal Government Act, setting a minimum price to be accepted. This is such a hilarious motion. Setting a minimum price to be accepted by the municipality at a tax sale and contract negotiations. Moved by Counselor Armstrong, seconded by Counselor Granger. Thank you. Any discussion on the motion to go in camera to discuss these things? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor, or otherwise, please vote in the usual fashion. Much appreciated. And thanks to all of you for being here tonight. Hope you had fun, you enjoyed it. We appreciate your time and you being here. And as always, to staff, you're amazing, you're excellent, appreciate all you do. Motion carries. We'll take a 10 to 15 minute break because I forgot my water bottle in the cafeteria and I've been dying. Much appreciated. See you back here at 8:10. Thank you. See you back here at 8:10. Thank you.